Bear with us, we're trying to resume. Okay, I think we're all set. I'd like to welcome everybody to the town board meeting for November twenty fifth. I'd ask everybody to please silence their cell phones. And ask everybody to please stand for the question.
Right to leave this is the flag of the United States of America. To the power which stands in our nation under God, universal, and liberty and justice.
So can I want to open with the public hearing on local law five dash twenty twenty four? Kim, are you going to read that?
Yes. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town of Lewiston, Nyack County, New York, on the twenty fifth day of November twenty twenty four, commencing at six o'clock P M. in Town Hall, thirteen seventy five River Road, Lewiston, New York, on the adoption of a local law modifying chapter three sixty solar energy systems of the town of Lewiston Code. Said law is intended to clarify the town of Lewiston Building Department's procedure of initial approval in annual inspections relative to the various solar energy systems that exist within the town of Lewiston. The complete text of said law is not filed at the office of the town clerk. It is available for review by any interested person during business hours. At such public hearing, all persons interested who wish to be heard will be heard, dated November fourteenth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. So I have two signing sheets, one for the public hearing and one for just residents that want to address the board. Is there anybody, nobody signed up for it, is there anybody here that wants to speak in regards to local law five dash twenty twenty four? Okay. Do I have to close the podium?
I move to close the public hearing.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Agenda approval, does anybody have to amend the agenda? I have nothing. So I ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
With motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the meeting minutes from eleven fourteen, they're incomplete, aye. Abstract of claims, Councilman Lecter?
Yep, I'd like to make the, um, November twentieth, eleven twenty five, twenty twenty four, move to approve the regular abstract of claims twenty four dash zero three zero nine four through twenty four dash zero three two two one, and recommend payment in the amount of one million, five hundred forty six thousand, two hundred and seventy two dollars and forty one cents, but with a post-artist of zero dollars.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay. With that, we will open it up to residents' comments. I have first, Mr. Don Smith, eleven sixty nine Ridge Road, Lewiston, New York. Could you please speak into the mic as best you can?
Okay, is it working?
Yeah.
Okay. It doesn't, okay. I'm very nervous.
Okay.
So, um, we've been working on a solar project on my property, I am the owner of the property, for the last, um, not quite two and a half years. Um, we've completed all of the surveys and the, all the wetland stuff and, uh, impact stuff and everything. And the new regulation that you cannot put solar on agriculture land as opposed to industrial land has, has created a new challenge for us. So the solar company, which is U S Solar, asked me to come forward and just, um, just, the goal is to just open the discussion and not have it shut down before we actually get to present um, the plan to, to the board for a waiver. I believe, I believe that we have, um, the conditions that would allow for a waiver, um, largely because my property is completely landlocked and that creates an issue for other types of, of development because there is no direct public access to my property. It's through, all of it is through another place. So I provided everybody, I think, I think, I think everybody has it, a kind of a, an overview of what we're trying to do, what some of the benefits are. I will, uh, I'll start out and point out that this picture on the front of this thing is a picture of the back of my property that faces Ridge Road and that's one of the things I wanted to point out because, um, the property is largely hidden from Ridge Road. Um, so therefore, most of the, if you look for it, you can see it, I'm not going to say it's completely hidden. But if you look for it, then you'll be able to see the array. But if you're just driving past, you wouldn't even know it was there. Many, many people don't even know the house is there, even people who have been there for a long time. This is the back of my house. If you look at the peak of the gable, that's about where Ridge Road is behind the house. So I don't know if, if, if you want me to go through this point by point or whether you want to.
I have a question for you, Mr. Smith, because I'm familiar with the situation and, um, you know, I, I started to read it and your very first sentence, this array is typical of nature for a smaller community array and there are no known construction obstacles. Well, from what I understand, there is a gigantic construction ob- obstacle in the form of a sovereign nation that owns approximately thirty feet of the front of your property?
Yeah, that's an access.
That says, oh, that says they will not allow a solar farm construction anywhere across their property?
Okay, so that's an access issue, not a construction issue. Um, the solar would not be on their property.
Well, I understand that, but it's a construction obstacle, it's an obstacle to constructing it, they're not going to allow you to, I mean, I didn't attend the meeting, I believe Mr. Masters attended the meeting and I thought the reservation of the nation was pretty clear that they were not going to give any permission to cross the front of your land.
I was unaware that we have had a formal meeting with the reservation.
We did.
We did?
Yep. It was a Zoom meeting with your, your solar company and representative from the nation and at that meeting, they said they were not interested.
Okay. A hundred percent, they, because your solar company, I guess, talking to them, brought it up twice. You know, and they talked about having negotiations and they said, from what I understand, they said, plain as day, there's no negotiations, this will not be allowed use across our sovereign land.
That's the last I heard from them.
And that's why I was surprised when you wanted to speak today, I was like, has anything changed? And, and from what I understand, nothing's changed. So I think that's going to be the big stickler point, obviously, we've changed the law to be industrial, I think that's secondary to a sovereign nation giving permission to, to, to be able to do that.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'd be more than happy to schedule a meeting and have you come in and talk some more, um, but I would talk with your solar company, see where they stand with the nation.
Okay. They asked me to do this, because they felt that like this was the first obstacle to, to, to.
I, I don't think so, now you're dealing with a sovereign nation. Because, I mean, obviously, as you know, you know, they own from one side to the other and that's why I believe the winery had to put their entrance.
No, because of modern.
It did. Oh, okay.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's because of what?
Modern owned the railroad.
Oh.
But I thought, I thought they had to put their, because they're, it's immediately east of the Tuscor Nation sign.
They were able to put their driveway in on the east side of their property, which avoided the nation, but they still had to cross the, the Hoget High, which was owned by Modern.
Yeah, but it avoided the nation, you don't have that option, you're totally landlocked by the nation, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, I'm, like I said, I've been more than.
On, on that one side.
Pardon?
On the one side.
Right, but you can't, but you can't access your property from any other place.
That's right.
Okay. If, if you want to schedule a meeting, give me a call tomorrow
Okay.
and, and I'll be more than happy to talk to you, but that's, that's a major obstacle.
So the solar company, just, the solar, the only thing the solar company asks me to do is to get your agreement to further discuss.
Well, we can dis, we can discuss it further, I have no problem.
And, and I can go back to them and say, we got this in the wrong order, we need to switch it around and work with the nation. Um, there were very significant incentives they offered to the nation, but, um, they weren't interested at the time.
Right.
Now, I don't know if that means they'll never be interested or, or not, I mean, based on what you're saying, they'll never be interested.
From my conversations with several people from up there, because there's some, part of the property down there has some, um, some burial grounds that they're not familiar with exactly where they are, maybe they don't want any disruption to their property, that's what I was told. So, I, I definitely think that's a, a lot bigger hurdle than, having the five of us change our mind and we're a solar park.
Okay. Okay.
Okay?
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mia Lori, Lori, sorry.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me?
I can hear you, speak up, because we, I know what you're talking about and I have Jeff Ritter on the, uh, our Zoom, so I want him to hear this.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, first of all, I want to say thank you for what you've already done. I've seen, I live on Morgan Drive in Lewiston and I've seen a lot of people out, a lot of things being taken care of, um, River Road and Morgan Drive, I know that was taken care of, so I want to say thank you so much. But in light of the longevity of the water problems that I've had in my residence and us other members on Morgan Drive, there's just a few questions that I have. Um, the town of Lewiston residents still have a lot of unanswered questions. We would like to have answers. We understand that we're dealing with two separate issues at the same time, sewer backups and storm water flooding. With that said, the sewer backups are caused by storm slash groundwater seeping into the cracked or disconnected sewer pipes on Morgan Drive. You had the camera truck in use on Morgan Drive several months ago to visualize blockage, cracks, disconnections of the lateral lines to the main street line. We understand you can only visualize the beginning of the lateral at the connection site. We have asked this before, so when will the residents receive a notice that their line is cracked or disconnected? This area falls on the town's responsibility, so can you tell us when the residents affected can expect to receive these letters stating where and what problems exist with the pipes? This could be a contributing factor with sewage backing up into our basements. There was no mention of the aid plants being funded with money that was allotted for backflow preventers. When was the decision made to add these? As we appreciate the efforts of the town has made thus far, it continues to fall short with a permanent solution. I, I know you.
Can we have a copy of that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amy Elwino, is that, am I saying that right?
Uh, yes, you are.
Okay.
Okay, same topic, but, uh.
Speak up for me, because like I said, Jeff Ritter from the sewer is on, on our Zoom.
So, I understand that, um, there is a belief that the wastewater treatment plant can handle all of the new development that is occurring in the town. But one of the things that we wonder about is peak flow capacity. Um, we agree with you that on a dry day, there will be enough capacity in the sewer system for a bunch more houses. But it appears that there are going to be more and more very wet days and more and more sudden thaws, where we will have a lot of water all at once. Um, and we want to know, you know, if that water's getting into the sewer system, how is that going to be? And that, so that's our concern, is what happens on the wet days? And is there, has there been more, you know, is there going to be more outdoor temporary storage of water? Have there been more pumps put in? How is this going to be handled? Because, you know, unless things are very different come January or February, we're going to have a big old thaw and, um, people's houses will be full of either storm water or sewer backup. And, um, so we have concerns. And then the other thing would be, of course, that with more development, we have less land available to, um, take in the, um, storm water. So as more impervious surfaces are available, that means there's going to be more storm water than there was before. So these are the concerns we have and we look forward to working with you. And one last thing, one thing that I have in my house are water alarms. So, um, and they're just really simple things that you put them on the floor and if water passes, it completes an electrical connection and an alarm goes off. It might be something that the town promotes, they're about fifteen dollars each for the simplest ones, you know, so that people would at least have warning if the water is coming up or backing up and perhaps they could save some of their stuff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bethany Elias.
Good evening, folks, Bethany Elias, five nine five, Morgan Drive, Lewiston. First of all, again, I would like to voice, uh, the opinion of our group that we are thankful for what we've seen being done, it's been, uh, hopefully it will put some impact into it. Um, the guys, we see them out there doing all kinds of work, some of it we know, some of it we don't, but again, thank you. Um, now, this, the storm, this question, I guess, or comment is for, um, Jeff Ritter. He had said in a recent article in the Sentinel that the, the main pipe was the reason for all the flooding on Morgan Drive. Well, it isn't quite true and the pipe was not a total collapse. I have seen pictures of the pipe before it was fixed and it was, there was no way that water could not have gotten through there, no. So there was another, there had to be another reason as to why that was happening. Um, and I know we've asked this twice.
Real quick, are you talking about Lower River and Morgan?
Yes, Lower River and Morgan, correct.
So, I'll ask, I'll have you finish and then Mitch Zano is actually in charge of that and if it's got departmental concerns, I'll ask him to address it.
I, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, yeah, that's why I just want to let you know.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, again, we've asked twice about the storm sewer, storm drain pipes were not installed to the specs. I'll, I'll read what I've got here. Has any of the board members looked into the storm water pipes being installed and corrected by the town employees in the Morgan Farms development back in the nineties? This should be able to be answered tonight, whether it's a yes or no, whether you looked into it or not, because I know we've asked you twice before. Um, they were not installed according to the engineer's specs, Seer Brown Engineering Firm. They are smaller in diameter and not installed to the proper depth. Seer Brown, however, signed off on them. I've heard reasons as to why, but it's hearsay and not only if indeed they did, it's illegal. Um, and when those pipes were installed, I, I understand that now there's a big money issue that repairs can't be taken care of. But at the time, when those pipes were installed, seventy-five percent was funded by the federal government. Twelve and a half was funded by the state.
Are you talking about the sewer plant?
No, no, I'm talking about the pipe.
Okay.
And then twelve and a half was, you know, by the town. So, with that being said, that was, that was a lot of money the town didn't have to put out, so. And I know there were certain regulations by both the federal government and the state that requirements for the town to maintain those pipes, which we all know, they really haven't been maintained over the years, and I'm not blaming you guys, it's been thirty years. So, um, with that being said, maybe you could spend a little bit of money and take care of some of those pipes. Now, with, with the pipes that are disconnected, the letter that we're asking for are for the folks that, when we went through with the, the camera. We understand that it's not the line that's in the people's yards, it's the line that connects to the main line. I know my line is disconnected. That could be contributing to some of our problems with the sewage coming in. Um, I, no one's ever told me or my husband that our line is disconnected from the town or the sewer department.
Didn't we have a conversation with the guys in the truck?
My husband did, but I.
Right.
But, okay, so we, he, he had a conversation with the guys in the truck.
Right.
We have not gotten anything official saying that.
From that inspection?
True.
Okay.
Exactly. Or that when it's going to be fixed.
Okay.
Um, now, uh, with Councilwoman Wachler, uh, back in September, I gave you that article, uh, you read it? Did you share it with the rest of the council? Yep. Okay. That article, again, was published in the Niagara Gazette by Aaron B. Spector dated October thirty first of two thousand and six, regarding the wastewater treatment plant. The title was nearing capacity. Two thousand and six. Would you not agree that our infrastructure has substantially increased since the article was written? I mean, it has, we all know it has. Yet, in relation to that article and the facts, that even with the many improvements made to the wastewater treatment plant, none of which involve handling the increased sewer capacity? There are none. Can you honestly now tell us that the wastewater treatment plant can handle an increase we've experienced this last year? Based on that article and that nothing has been done as far as holding the capacity? A lot has been done. You toured it, has anybody else toured it? And has, and has anybody been able to tell you they can handle an added capacity? It's all, none has been done for capacity. Um, you started, or you, yeah, you started, you stated that there was an engineering study on the infiltration problem and it's being done and we should have results by December fourteenth of this year. Who's doing this stuff?
Real quick, is that what she's referring to, is that what you're talking about down Morgan Drive?
The, the Morgan, the Morgan and Drive enrollment is what we call under the relief sewer and what we've done there is we've done a topographic survey, that's been done. And then what was out, actually out there today and maybe a part of tomorrow is a, a drilling company going out there and making soda horns.
Is that what she's talking about?
Uh, that's not a, that's not a flow study, that's trying to get some collection field data to determine what we're going to encounter if we put a relief sewer down more, uh, down Roman.
So what, what, so what we've learned, and I don't know if that, I don't know exactly if that's what, what you're talking about, what we've learned is when the sewer leaves Morgan Farms in your area, it goes all the way to Lower River Road, goes down to Dutton, comes back to Dutton and then goes to the plant. What we're looking at is taking it from Morgan and Roman due north straight to Dutton and avoid going around the front to get to your backside, kinda. I mean, because going all the way to Lower River Road, Lower River Road, Dutton back, when, we could, so we're, that's what he's doing now. So I think we approved about fourteen thousand dollars of engineering work
Yep.
to talk about, uh, uh, what would you call it, a secondary sewer?
A field investigation phase at this point.
For a secondary sewer?
Uh, uh, we're called a relief sewer, relief sewer, so, yeah.
That would change the elevation as well, we're hoping, so that it comes into that, would you call it a pit at Dutton? Or what would you call it at Dutton?
Uh, no, just a mallow, it's not a mallow.
A mallow, it would come in higher, right? And then it would be almost impossible backflow from that. I don't know if that's going to solve it, but that's what we're looking, we're looking at.
Okay. I, I guess I misunderstood because I thought there was an independent study being done about the infiltration and, and no disrespect, but he's not an independent person to do it, so.
But he's a town engineer.
I, well, but it said independent, so I guess, I, I saw independent, so.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know what you're referring to, but, I mean, there's no problem. Go ahead, go ahead, I just want to make, I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Okay. And, um, we've asked again, any debt for reimbursement for losses incurred involving sewer jam flooding events? Uh, anybody change your mind on this?
You, you filed a claim with our insurance company, correct?
I did and they said exactly what you said.
What, what did they say?
Act of nature.
Okay.
One in a thousand years.
Right.
One in a hundred. We know that's not true. And I'm not talking about just me, I'm talking about our Morgan Farms group and from what I've learned now, there's probably twenty or more in the village and the town. They can prove lots of.
Well, I'm, I'm sure we've had flooding probably every year that I've been here in different parts of the town.
But there's proof that this, this town, and again, I've got you guys, goes back thirty years, that this town board has been aware of flooding in these areas and has done nothing to rectify the problem. I know you're trying your best now, but that still puts all of these residents out, thousands and thousands of dollars. Um, we're, we're, we're quite serious about giving a permanent solution to all of this. Um, not only the sewage and the flooding and reimbursements. We're at a point of, we're, we ask and we ask and we ask and we get no questions answered. We really don't get every question we've asked throughout the months that we've been here, we hardly get questions answered. Um, I'm giving you guys many opportunities, it's not like we haven't tried, we're here, we weren't here last month, but we've been here month after month after month. Somebody could have reached out to any one of us, you've got our, uh, the names of the board members. Um, anyway, we're at, we're, we're at a point of no longer asking town officials to.
Hold on, Jeff, hold on, let her finish.
To do the right thing. And, um, maybe someone will be out of office soon and figure it won't be a problem anymore, I don't know. I don't, I, it's not my guess, it's just an assumption, which I shouldn't do. But, um, we haven't, I just want, and it isn't a threat, so we'll take it that way, but we have to protect ourselves and like I said, there's a lot of people that are out, thousands of dollars. So we have decided to contact attorney and we're talking now because we know that, I'm sure you know that the year is almost up, that we have to file. And I'm sure, if I were on your board, I probably would have been stalling this whole time too. We're not stupid, we've got a, a very educated group of people and we've been trying to work so hard with you guys, but we're not getting any better and that's what has led us to the point we're at.
I don't appreciate the word stalling, I mean, I think like you said, you've seen us out there, right? We've looked into it, we're doing, we are doing as much as we can as quick as we can, okay?
I understand that, it's not what I meant by stalling.
Well, I've heard stalling, I heard we're doing nothing, um, it's not the case.
My, my, my point with the stalling is we aren't getting the answers from you guys. I'm not talking about what they're doing out there.
I responded through Jeff Ritter, because Jeff Ritter's the expert, right? There's nobody on this board that's qualified to answer for Jeff Ritter. And I believe I. And I believe I responded an email to your, with all the questions that you guys asked, that Jeff Ritter had supplied answers to. Whether they were, whether they were answers you wanted or not, though, you know, but, did you not get that email?
I, I did get an email.
Okay.
I did.
Okay.
And, and, but they, they weren't real answers, I mean, they're answers, but-
Yeah, ha- have you reached out to Jeff and met him, like, personally, and had, had him do a visit to your home? To, I mean, 'cause here, here's another part of the, the situation, is you know my aunt and uncle live there. No flooding. Several people I've talked to out there, no flooding. So my question is, why are they not experiencing flooding and you guys are?
Well, I could probably answer that question.
Okay.
They're split leveled. There is not a split level on Morgan Drive that, that flooded, not a one. I went house to house. Not a one.
So, so what would be, what would be the difference then? Why would a split level not flood in your flood?
Because of their basements.
Eleven, eleven.
The elevations for the sewer lines.
Do you have a hang-in sewer, or a floor?
Sewer.
Okay. So, I mean, I'd be more than happy to schedule a meeting. A, a, a group meeting, we'll have Jeff there, we'll have Mitch there, we can sit out in my office, we could sit out in here, and have a meeting just with your group, and go over everything. Um, you know, we're doing an engineering study, we did the hundred thousand plus on the pipe at Morgan and Lower River Road, um, where, where we found some blockage at, on Vroomin, right in front of Dr. Perry's property, that's next on the, um, the agenda to get unplugged, that goes east towards the parkway. Um, there was some water in there that I believe, Mitch, you are on- Right. Like there's sometimes- And that's supposed to go all the way to, uh, the parkway. And it, and it's not, they, they found out where, where it comes out, 'cause nothing's coming out. So that's gonna be, that'll be, and we have an easement, and we're gonna go in there and clean that pipe out and clean that ditch out. So we are looking into, to, to avenues to alleviate a lot of-
I, 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 and I, and I know you are, and I, and believe you, we appreciate all that being done, and we're hoping against all odds that that will help.
Well, I am too.
Yeah, but on the other hand, we still are looking for reimbursement of all the damages that have been caused. We're not asking them over thirty years since the town has known about these problems. We're just looking for issues, that's all.
Okay. Are, are, are you done?
I am, I thank you.
Mark, do you have anything to add?
I do, I have a question.
Okay.
For two reasons. Volume's not real good, my ears are-
Oh, oh, yeah, speak up, 'cause Jeff's listening, I'm gonna have Jeff address it under Department of Concerns.
Hello, everybody. Uh, I couldn't hear very well, so, uh, my question is, the sewer line that's going from Vroomin to Fletcher, is it in use?
Vroomin to Fletcher, is a sewer line?
It's a water line, drinking water.
Aren't it?
Drinking water.
I have sent pictures of a sewer line, and I have them on my phone, going from Vroomin to Fletcher.
Hold, hold on one second.
There's a water line that, that was just this-
Jeff?
Yes.
The question is, is there a sewer line from Vroomin to Fletcher, along Vroomin?
There is a, i- is he talking about a drainage line? Or is he talking about a sanitary sewer line?
He's talking about sanitary sewer line.
There's a sanitary sewer line that ends, that goes, uh, to the end of Roman.
Okay, and then where does it go from there?
It turns down Dutton, and that was that, uh, parent that we had talked about.
Okay. And then it flows west and then north to the plant at, at Lower River Road?
Yes.
Okay. Is that what you're referring to, sir?
That is what I'm referring to, with the pictures that were sent to me. And again, I, I, I can show you, if you'd like to look at it, maybe-
The only line that runs through there was our old ten-inch water line, and all the way to backside, all the way to Fletcher Road, which is the longest grid service.
Can I show you?
Drinking water.
E- e- absolutely. So, that's a sewer pipe, isn't it?
The only way you can sneak down into this is if you pull the manhole cover.
What's that?
It's definitely not drinking water, but-
Exactly, it's a manhole. It's a manhole, and it's heading down-
Where, where is it? Where the, where you're taking that picture, where is that?
Standing at the end of Vroomin, you're cutting a room. Down towards, up, down, facing Fletcher, looking north.
Looking north or south?
So, he's looking, he's looking north, so he's standing with, uh, Vroomin to his back, and he's looking north, and it's just a, it's a manhole. But I can't tell from it whether it's storm or sanitary, um, it's one or the other. There's an orange cone there. Are you right at the fence when you're taking that picture?
We are close.
Yeah, so he's, he's right near the fence.
Perhaps, uh, I could meet with, uh, Mr. Elias, and we could talk about this.
Okay, yeah, and that's what I, I would suggest, so if you wanna talk, you know, hold to Jeff?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's just a, it's a manhole cover.
I don't think he knows it's-
Yeah, can I get a, can I get a map of this sewer line somehow?
He can show them to you. Yeah?
Because I'm just interested, if that's there, why aren't we using it?
Please contact him, 'cause we, we need to know about this. Yeah, you can't tell if I look at it.
Sure looks like it, I mean, it's a hetsi, something.
Yeah.
It's a manhole, could give me number things.
Yeah.
Could be storm.
It's not electric.
Storm.
It's not electric, well, see, they're stronger sewer.
So, you, you have Jeff's contact information, right?
I, I figured it out by phone.
Yeah, please reach out to him, and I'll even come down there and meet you as well. So-
And maybe with your walk, it's gonna be more manhole.
Well, I'll show you what I'm talking about on Vroomin, where it's plugged, it's definitely plugged. It's between Dr. Perry's property and the house to the north of him, I don't know who that would be, but, right, Dr. Perry's property. And that's storm.
I, I was, I, I, I was told by a past employee that that's, the storm sewer, I'm sorry, not storm sewer, sanitary sewer was installed like forty years ago in, uh, preparation for development, it was stacked there.
Okay.
And it's not being used.
Okay.
Uh, but if that's the case, this could be an easy fix.
Well, it's got, I, believe me, I wish there was an easy fix, I don't think there's an easy fix, but we'll look into every avenue. Like I said, right now, we're looking at low hanging fruit.
Right.
Um, any major project's gonna be, you know, obviously a couple of years, um, so, but yeah. Give, give Jeff a call, and then Jeff can reach out to me, I'll meet you down there, okay? Okay, thank you, Mark. John Elwino, eh, eh, you're, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm gonna move on to department head statements, which hopefully might answer a couple of questions here. So, um, let's start with, uh, Cameron, anything? Captain, anything?
No report.
No report? Okay. Um, Tim, anything? Jack, you're on the agenda. Um, Danny?
Mm-hmm.
No? Okay. Bob, you wanna real quick just talk about what you're looking at between Morgan and Dutton down Vroomin?
Yes, a- as you described earlier, Mr. Supervisor, the way that the sewage flows, kinda takes a, a long circuitous route to get from what would be, I think, the east side of Morgan down to the plant, okay? Along that route, there are other inputs, I believe one is from the village of Lewiston. So, i- i- it accumulates additional flow the further down this pipe that you go. What we're looking to construct is a, basically a shortcut to take that long loop from the flows east of Morgan, instead of going all the way around adding more flow, and under high flow conditions, whether it's snowmelt, rain, or, or both, that overtaxes the sewer system. We're looking at, to take that part of Morgan out and have it go straight down Vroomin to, uh, to basically parallel the existing sewer that goes from Dutton north. And that'll insulate that section of Morgan to, to a degree. That, that, so what we've done recently is we did a topographic survey. Um, you might have seen some people out there with some survey stakes and such, and then today, and tomorrow, I believe at least a part of the day, they're gonna put in four soil borings to a depth of twenty feet, to determine what type of geotechnical conditions we're gonna encounter, um, along that, along that alignment. So that, that's, at a high level, that's kind of what we're, uh, what we're just wrapping up here as we speak, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um, and Mitch, you wanna talk about that pipe a little bit?
Yes. That pipe that was on Lower River Road that you were talking about, that was collapsed down to about eight inches out of thirty-six.
I mean, over thirty-six.
Then it was unraveled, it actually ran it from itself, and dirt come through that, and filled it. That was lucky, if it probably could take ten percent of what it's capable of.
That wasn't the picture I saw.
That definitely wasn't the picture that you saw, you did see the right picture of that. I have those pictures, I, my office, I'd like to show you that. The pipe was right down in my garden, I'd like to show you that. That would move hardly any water, nothing.
I'm just-
So, that is, that is gonna, I'm curious, I've been down and I got this last water, but everything's so dry right now, that it wasn't having anything coming through and coming across the road, to be fair, it's tough to see. But that is definitely gonna help, is it gonna fix that? That I can answer for you. Is it gonna take a lot more of your storm water from your place that you have there? Absolutely. So, I mean, the, the first thing we'll know when we get a couple inches of rain, before we give the stop, to test it, but it's definitely gonna be better than what it was right now, yes.
And I know water runs downhill, right? And that's about all I know, but I really believe that that blockage in front of Dr. Perry's house is gonna help immensely as well. Because that takes some of your water north on, uh, Vroomin. And Rob and I went out there, it had been two weeks without any rain, not a, not a drop of rain, and the pipe that was heading east was completely covered in water. And, and literally been bone dropped. So, um, we got all the paperwork, the easements, we've actually talked to Dr. Perry. Mitch and his crew went to the Far East and found out where it empties into, um, the, the ditch on the side of the parkway, on the west side of the parkway. And I believe you're gonna start back there, or are you gonna start on Vroomin?
We'll start on Vroomin.
And then you're way, make your way back. 'Cause piped, and then it's open ditch, right?
And then it's piped the last two hundred feet there, it's piped right into the parkway.
Really?
Yeah.
'Cause there's nothing over there, right?
Just that open ditch, and then we, there's a mid-inch pipe that runs around and dumps into that too, it goes off to the parkway there.
Okay, so I, I believe, and I hope I'm right, that that's gonna help immensely.
She'd make them stop.
Yeah, me too, both of them, all of them. So, okay, thank you very much. Um, but Mitch, you have something else?
Yes.
I have also got the, uh, bids in for the brush grinding down. There was two bids that we received, one was from Wired Corporation for twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars, and the second one was from Zoldex Construction Corporation for thirty thousand, four hundred and twenty. And, uh, I was looking to, they have Wired for twenty-four thousand, six hundred.
Mitch, I have a question, and they may eyeball that, and John Jacoby, I'll give him credit for this. Their cost per yard is more, but their price is less. Do they eyeball that pile and give you a price on them?
Yeah, there, there's no measure of, like, they don't know how tall it is, how square, a lot of it is yes.
So basically, they're gonna go for twenty-four cents.
Yeah.
Whether they charge fourteen dollars a yard or one dollar a yard, they're doing it for twenty-four cents.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, are we accept that?
Accept it.
And then we have a motion in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Motion carried.
Anything else?
That's enough.
Okay. Um, Tim Smith couldn't be here, but he did, I believe, send some stuff to S- Sarah Wector about, about the, uh, skating. I asked him to send some stuff about some of the things. We had our first skating last night at Nye University, and, and, and it was compliments of the Tower of St. I believe there's a total of about twenty-some skates, and I believe sixteen of them are paid for, that, that are free to the public.
Yes, he didn't tell me that, but he did give me a, uh, a flyer that has them listed, so if anybody's interested, remember to welcome afterwards to take a screenshot of it. And then also too, he left a calendar of events that is coming up at the plant, and I'm doing it for the month of December, so if you also would like to have a copy of that. So, right now, there's, I think, about ten of them that are the skates that are planned until, uh, the first of the year.
Yeah, and just the next couple, there's one on December fourth at seven-thirty PM, and, and he's referred to that as baseball night. And then December eleventh, seven-thirty-nine, hat night. And they'll sneak up on you, but it, it's really good, um, it's not just kids, it's adults skating, adults showing up without kids skating, which was one of our goals of our recreation program, to include adults in our recreation program, it's not just about kids. So it's been extremely successful in, um, online on the Tower of St. website, there's actually pictures of how many people were in attendance last night. So I appreciate that, um, yeah.
Is they are eliminating the ice cream?
Yeah, the ice cream's done. Yeah. Okay, Jeff Ritter, your turn.
Okay, would you like me to answer some of these questions?
Yes, I, I would appreciate it.
Okay, well, first, what I said, uh, that was in the sense of, was that drainage can contribute to I and I. Water needs to go someplace, and in a storm, when you're getting five inches of rain dropped on you, it needs to go where it has to go very quickly, okay? So if there's any trouble, if the water get in there, it, it accumulates on the ground, it finds its way into the pump bay, okay? Um, as to the capacity of the plant, right now, only half of our sewer plant is online, because we haven't been inundated with rain. Okay, so, we actually need more water to make the plant work properly at this point. Um, obviously, there is an inflow, an infiltration problem. Um, I'm just wondering, first off, we weren't allowed inside the Elias house, but they allowed cameras in there, and when the cameras took, the, the cameras through channel four or channel two took pictures, um, they had a cap in their floor that wasn't properly screwed in. I mean, that's not our problem. That water was squirting out of this cap because they didn't screw it down properly. And I said that we could come in and help them, and they decided that they did not want us in the house. Now, as far as the I and I did this, for their pipes that are being connected to the main line, it would be much more economical to give our backflow prevention program, and, and as a backflow preventer put in, that'd be the end of the story. No problems for anybody. And we've only had two people take that up, I believe.
Tim, how many permits have you got for that?
I'm aware of one, I'm not sure about two.
Okay. But, but, so Jeff, basically, you're offering to visit any home on Morgan Farms to try and assist?
Yeah, we want to, uh, um, we wanna, we wanna, um, we want this to stop, and we wanna work with everybody. We don't wanna butt heads on it with anybody on this.
Okay.
Now, um, the Village Board meeting on the eighteenth, we had the village adopt some of our sewer code, okay? And codify our town forces to participate in sewer system inspections of houses at the time of sale, because most of these I and I, uh, um, issues are on private property. They're not out in front of us, otherwise we would take care of them. Um, and last Friday, we had a DEC annual inspection, and we are in substantial compliance. Um, they monitor us like crazy, okay? So, um, these mysterious lagoons or, or anything like that, I would love to have somebody come and take a tour of the plant, to show you how things really work, okay? And then compare it to any other sewer system in Western New York. When you get five inches of rain, you're gonna get flooded, okay? The first place the water's gonna come in is in your basement. So, um, please, if anybody has any questions like this, we can talk about it down at the plants, or we can meet someplace, I'd love to give tours of the plant. And that's all I have to say, thank you, and I apologize for not being there.
No, I understand, Jeff, I understand, thank you. Now, Mr. and Mrs. Elias, would, could we come to your house and, and, and try and help you solve your problem?
Yes. Yeah, you know what, I, I just have to make the comment.
Okay.
When the use, uh, channel, channel seven and channel two came to our house, channel seven did not come into the home, channel two did. At that point, there was no water spewing out when they filmed, that was prior. My husband fixed the, the thing, the cap was pushed, the water was being forced up so much, it was coming through. The cap was screwed on, it was coming up through the threads, so I just wanna make that clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, if I can, uh, like I said, we'll, we'll set it up, we'll come over to the house. I know we talked, I talked to you before about possibly your down scouts going in that bad ditch, I don't know if you've done that?
Yeah, they've been like that for years.
Yeah, so, I know not everybody has, I wa- when I walked it, I noticed some people had, and some people hadn't, so. But we, like I said, I'd be more than happy to come out, we went out to, um, I'm sorry, I gotta look, to Mrs. Laurie's house. Um, we went in the basement, um- Um, we went in the basement, um, and I think we had everybody there. I think Rob was there, I was there, I believe Mitch, Jeff Cosgrove, I think was there.
Ryan Triplet.
Yeah, Ryan Triplet was there from Sewers, so we're more than willing to come out to the house and tell you a visit, so. And Tim was there, I'm sorry, and Tim was there, so. Okay, well, thanks, Jeff. Um, okay, with that, I'm gonna move on, thank you, everybody, I think that was very, very productive. Um, all pending business, um, we already took care of the public hearing, no new business. Under the my liaison report, um, we have the Juicianna's here with the Washington Drive bonus density. Gentlemen, do you wanna?
Uh, good evening, Joe Juicianna, president of Five Four Development, uh, six twenty-five Center Street, Houston. I, uh, we, we've been before the planning board previously, uh, presenting this project. Um, after doing some, actually backing up, looking at this project from when we started, just to give you a quick history. You know, we started this sort of pre-COVID, back when, when everything was more reasonably priced. Um, so this project isn't, it's, it's not, it's not a project that hasn't just, it's not just, uh, what's the term I wanted? Just, just evolved into something, um, and, and a very short period of time. So we, so we spent a lot of time on this, probably over four years working on this, trying to put together the, the financial model. What we continue to run, run into is just not enough units on the site in order to justify the project financially. Uh, and part of that attribute to what's happened in the last four years is the cost of building materials, the cost of construction, and so on. Um, reviewing the towns code, uh, and after talking to the planning board, I, I discovered that it, within the, uh, town code, it's actually the town board that approved bonus density. That the planning board is more of a recommendation, uh, to the, uh, town board. So I'm here before you today to really ask for approval for bonus density for this project. Uh, be the equivalent of one more unit per acre, or, or a total of forty units. Um, I thought, what, what does it approve?
So, so a number of two-ten?
Two-ten, right. So it'd be, by code, we're allowed a hundred and eighty-eight units. Um, I'm asking for another, I'm gonna give them, ask for another, um.
Three-twenty-one? Twenty-two.
Twenty-two units.
Right.
You know, I bring my density up to, uh, nine units per acre, or, or a total of two hundred and ten units.
How many total acres do you own?
Twenty, it's like twenty-three, twenty-four acres. So, so by code, uh, we're allowed eight units per acre, which is a hundred and eighty-seven units, a hundred and eighty-eight units, if you round that off. Uh, we're asking for, you know, the equivalent of nine, uh, units per acre. And, and the one thing I might point out in this request is that, uh, you go back and you look at how the multi-towny code has evolved over time, and you allow the density, at one time, this project, uh, this site, in the multi-towny code, allowed ten units per acre. So when we purchased this property back in the eighties, the zone was ten units per acre, and it got reduced to eight units per acre. Now, in order to make our financial, um, model work, we need, we need nine units per acre. Uh, and starts to make economic sense. So, we're not asking for what the old code allowed, we're kind of a compromise, you know, asking for nine.
Okay.
Basically, the short story.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, Mr. Juicianna? What kind of housing are you actually looking at here? Is this just gonna be if someone wants a condo or?
No, it's, it's, it's apartment, um, you know, the, the, uh, the project, yeah, would be basically seven buildings, uh, thirty units in each building, combination of one bedroom and two bedroom units. It'd be apartment, uh, apartment buildings, no condos or anything of that nature, and it'll all be market rate rents.
You're not looking at government surplus housing or nothing in there?
It's all market rate rent, right. Uh, that's just shows the fire code there, but, uh, typical fourth and.
Has the fire marshal looked over the plan yet, or?
He is not, well, he saw the original plans, like for the seven buildings. We, we are not short of adding additional parking that's required per code, the two units per acre, so two units, two car parts per unit. Uh, so we've added additional parking all around the, the seven buildings. Um, but the fire marshal did inspect, uh, and the original approval that I have received, I should make note of that. We did originally have a project approved for a hundred and sixty-eight units. They only did the deeper dive into the financials to recognize that, that this doesn't matter work. Uh, and that's the reason again for.
So the way I understand it, from talking to our attorney, and from talking to masters, and talking to, pardon me, all we would be doing is having a vote on bonus density. Everything goes back to the square law, everything goes back to the planning board, seeker, everything. All we're doing is, and it's kind of, the planning board, like, when I talked to Bill Burr, he was kind of stuck because he's like, the town allows for bonus density, but it's not by us, it's by the town board. So they didn't, they were reluctant to approve bonus density, even though we've done it in other situations. In this situation, they didn't feel comfortable approving bonus density when it comes to the town board, and then we don't basically give them bonus density. So, the, the decision was made by Juicianna's to approach the board and ask for the bonus density. And that's where we are, but everything starts, correct, Tim and Al, everything starts from scratch.
That's it.
This is a new project.
That's correct.
Everything, from the, for, as if there was no project to begin with, correct?
Well, the other thing we had talked about previously, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, because we already did the seeker with the traffic, and he got the letter already from DOT saying that this extra forty cars was still approved by New York State DOT. The traffic study, um, would be the one thing that wouldn't be repeated.
Right, yeah, if, if, to revisit the project from a seeker perspective, you, so if the project gets approved by seeker, and it's like this, the project changes a bit, you just need to do the supplemental seeker for what changes, what, what is increased.
But as far as the design, fire code?
They'll all get re-reviewed.
They'll all get re-reviewed, yeah, yeah. So.
Does anybody else have any, this, the question? So we're not admitting the originally approved project, as you said, uh, we're just expanding the DA after cover of the additional traffic.
Well, that's the traffic piece of it. So, yes, on the traffic, but the rest of it, as I understand it, it's like a clean slate started, started with your, with your.
Yeah, I mean, in, in my world, it doesn't matter if you call it a, uh, you know, regear, an alteration of the original or, or a new one. It's all the same process, so, you, I call it what you want, it doesn't matter to me, but the process is the same.
My, 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 my recollection, understanding is, is that the footprint is, doesn't change tremendously, or very little. You know, you're just making some of the units a bit smaller, if I understand it correctly, so it's, it's subtle changes, if you will, it's not going from A to Z, it's.
But like, Rob's question about the fire inspector and all that, everything will be?
All the same, yeah, all the same, yeah, all the same.
Does anybody else have any questions? It's, you mentioned something, say, it's bigger, or?
The buildings are, yeah, the buildings, in fact, are bigger, still seven, totally larger to accommodate the.
One, two, and three bedroom, right?
One and two.
Just one and two, okay.
In fact, the design, the, the roadways, all the accesses, none of those changes.
Right.
And so, conceptually, it's, it's the same plan, but, yes. We had received preliminary approval, all the five engineering, all the approval that come from that, that's still within the partner.
It's a concept that was.
Right, right. Anything else?
The motion we voted on?
Yeah.
I make that, uh, uh, bonus density.
So your motion needs to be specific to approve, uh, bonus density up to two hundred and ten units, um, for, for President's part, uh, part of the project, to go back to review, um, by planning board and start the process.
If you say it right, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, is that, is that your motion?
That's the motion I'm making.
I'll second.
The motion is second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, one nay. Okay, good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. and Mrs. Elias, I forgot the silent reflection, I think next time I'll save it till after you guys get done with your, uh, with your, 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 your public speaking. Your husband can't hear it, so.
I know.
He's frowning up here.
Um, also, what I, what I forgot to do, we had closed the public hearing. I will make a motion to approve local law number five of twenty twenty-four, a local law modifying chapter three sixty, solar energy systems of the town of Houston code.
Second.
So we have a motion of the second, and I believe that is to be a roll call vote?
Yes.
Yep. Uh, Councilman Jacoby?
Aye.
Councilman Morell?
Yes.
Councilman Myers?
Yes.
Councilman, or Councilwoman Wetter?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
That's okay.
Okay. Um, so now, under legal, we do have to go into executive session for consultation with our attorney on a couple of matters. We have a personnel matter, we have a.
Refund of, um, overpaid tax.
Right. And then, was that it?
I think that's it.
Those two issues, okay. So I need a motion, and we're gonna come back out, and we'll actually be taking action afterwards, so, um, excuse us for about ten minutes. We're gonna, um, I need a motion to move to executive session.
Motion to move to executive session?
Second.
Um, favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
You want to sign the sheets, please?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yes, what was that, don't sound so excited. Come on, come on up, real quick.
I can hear that.
Yeah.
She's available to.
Anywhere else?
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. He's gonna be direct with it. Executive session. Cause he was, he thought that that was the executive session.
What's I thought?
But I didn't put it, I didn't put it on. Apparently, he was picking his eyes on the road. It was, it's for the university. It's actually your, your form, Rob, whatever we got to do.
Seven one six?
Yep.
Four two five? Seven seven zero six?
There you go.
Seven one six?
Yeah, resident.
And four seven four six?
He heard that, he was.
I don't care. It's gonna be water, water sewer.
When he's here, it's an extension of the shift. If I'm here, it's. Started to grow to like days a little more when I did do them. For a while, when I, so I, when I was on patrol, I was on midnight, so I'd tie. And when I went there, it was like, huh?
How much? I see that every time.
I do, yeah. Good thing.
I had it for class, it was supposed to be for chief.
Okay.
It's your ear. This is not for me. I'm Nesbit and Miller, there's a stop sign there. They're complaining.
One, one time?
Coming down, Bill?
Yeah.
It was like a day.
We had center in the back. Yeah, I figured. Thanks. You don't mind doing this one?
Jeffrey.
I know you're doing. This one's for Jeffrey. So, yeah, you go to the board meeting, I think you talk to the chief, I'm like, no problem. Yeah, you got it. Yeah, I appreciate it.
We've done it before. There and, um. Stop sign over on Garrow, where it comes into the, those two, cause they're coming in and out of the town.
What I told them, to the mile and miles, I was way over here. Imagine what his answer was.
Hey, I always stop at your stop sign.
Yeah, they do. They're gonna get hit by a car.
Truck.
Over there, we'll ride a couple tickets, and he'll stop for a while.
Then go back at it.
Tell him to remind us here when it starts again.
Well, I, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
So now, when he asks.
I wrote the notes, so I don't forget.
He was on engineering first, I could scoot it.
Noticeable improvement since they put the lady in, I think there's something on the board.
I guess, yeah, I guess there hasn't been an accident.
Right?
None that I'm aware of, and I review all the actual reports, so.
I wasn't pretty sure if there was any.
Yeah, I think I personally would prefer to see it being a running light.
I, I actually talked to the DOT guy when it's been installed, and I said, I know the town was for a real light.
No, and, and even, just the other day, I was coming up, I was going out to Blackport for a meeting or something, I was coming up, and sitting there, just trying to get out of there sometimes, it can be a real pain in the middle of the day.
And, and, and they're coming, going east to west, they're coming down there pretty good at night, so I cross everything all the time, right? I have it ten times before I cross it.
The other thing I get nervous about is it's like, if I'm coming down lower mountain to Dickersonville, and I'm making that left down the ridge to head west, and while I, my blinkers on, I'm waiting, I see a car pull up. I would get nervous, that car's gonna jump me, like, go ahead and beat me down and end up.
Such, it seems like no one's gonna be there.
Right.
I pull up, and, I mean, they were there, it seems like five minutes before I was there. And they were there, not knowing what to do, and I'm.
I think that's why the full, a full circle light would have, a full better, but, I haven't had anything that I'm aware of, X and Y, so.
I know, weird. Like, why? I don't know.
Was the wind was blowing the falls or what?
Did I just? Like, yeah.
Not really.
I don't know if it was, I was tender, or you could talk to her.
Nope, don't bother. She go to what the hell I have to give to you.
Yeah, yeah. I told her it was raining out, you're canceling, I'm not sitting in the rain.
Yeah, it's good for her.
No.
Facture, and the fence coming in.
So, yeah.
And are you up next for that position?
Sure, I was the only one on the civil service list.
Now, was that, was that specifically said chief, of course? There was a problem, there was a problem, they wanted to take off that town of this stuff. And across that same section, all four of them went into. What's going on with it, with that, with the law, is it, is it jammed up, cause Mitch, was it Michigan, I said, no?
Mm-hmm. They don't wanna take it.
But isn't it a licensed facility? Michigan? It's licensed for that, I don't know, I think it's that. So is it, is it from the courts, or is it got to go somewhere else?
Well, we got mature, there are places where to go, there's only mature places in the country to go. Everyone knows.
Did I tell you a story about that? That, that, I'm sorry if I did. So that whole project, the, the design and all that stuff, right? There was a request for public agency just like that on the court last year, right? We were going, we went after that job hard, real hard. We had a buddy in Miami who works with me at the water plant in Buffalo, suspected that, knows the top guy at the Ivy Corps in Buffalo. The underground offices, Niagara, which is near Buffalo, this, we spent easily a hundred grand wanting to get that job. For fun, it was a hundred grand or more. The only, the other similar facility is in the Canadian land, is a resource workout with land that we need. So it's more of the same, just on this side of the lake. On the court, he's in a den, asking a hundred questions.
One down, one to go?
One down, one to go.
Two. Well, hopefully, it don't make the heaven, huh? We didn't have him at the Jackie, that's a lot of things. Asked a bunch of questions, and he'll right away change the guy in the same day.
And then switch to have the police contract.
Say it again?
Still have the police contract.
Don't let the police contract.
Is that, is that done, or what's up with that? Is that?
Yeah, it's done.
Okay. So they're voting out, proving it for that?
Hopefully.
Okay.
Sure, forgiveness will be quick and easy. And then season of hire. And then we still have, it's seven, seven ten.
I don't know, yeah. Whatever they want to do, why don't they do it here, the death property, whatever, whatever county, I don't know what, whatever city it is, why don't they do it there? Move a den, go a model, put it in there, we're back on the ground. That's all containment is gonna be for years, why would you move all that stuff in containment, another place in this country? It takes a work.
Yeah, but getting it moved in there, and the air moving, coming out, it doesn't even make sense to me, when everything over there is all contained. It's still makes sense to me.
I had originally an offer to pick up my grandson at seven thirty at school, good thing they didn't take my, uh, offer.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, he might have been like.
Depending how long this takes.
Yeah.
But it's not Nevada, maybe in Nevada.
No, no, no.
But I'm surprised, Michigan is a pricing facility, I'm surprised the state takes that, that place. They used to go to, another place.
What you guys plans for Thanksgiving?
I understand, well, I'm going to Michael's house.
Really?
I got, uh, twelve grandkids and three boys and wives coming over. And a new puppy. All in the same house.
That'll be.
It'll be quite the day.
We're expecting a miracle, so.
Oh, congratulations. Come on, do you know what you're having?
It's our first, so, excited.
Nice, God bless you guys, that's great.
We got, we've been two and a half years without a dog. We had a dog for a holiday, married by the other seven years, and now we're here. If you forget, it's like having a good one, it's like taking a thing out of a two hour, or.
Oh, yeah. So we don't need a, we don't need another.
Yeah, so you're right, the, the full double duty like everyone else.
That's three days. Yeah.
Wish you fair to your wife. As he's sitting here going, wonder how the puppy and the baby is doing.
Oh, you'll find out soon. The moment you walk in the door.
Roger, you go, yeah, I'll, I'll, you and Dave, you're like, Dave and your wife. Dave and Dave can go together. Oh, who are you? I know my show, team, I'm also.
How long have you been married?
Little over two years now.
Okay.
August twenty-two, we got married.
We, we have our one year anniversary, the first time we were born the week after. Didn't waste any time.
I guess not.
I had a two year plan.
We had a woman come in for birth certificates last week. And two children were born in the same year.
Really? Wow.
So you had your beat, then?
Wow.
Yep.
I think our cycle was thirteen months later. Which is tight, too. Same year, uh, uh.
Mm-hmm. Oof, yep.
It's almost like having twins.
I guess they have a lawyer and they lost all of their paperwork or something.
Hmm.
And birthday. It's like a whole day.
That's too bad, so, yeah. They're local?
Hey, most because they, most of them born in the very.
Yeah. Where'd everybody go?
I don't know. Wow. Cool people are still here.
People in there. Okay, thanks, everybody, um, just, we're out of the executive session, back to the meeting. So, a couple months ago, well, longer than a couple months ago, Tamara Burns came to me and advised me of an issue in the water department where a meter was not reading properly. Tamara did a yeoman's job of, of looking at all the bills, did all her homework. Luckily Tamara was familiar with the situation we had years ago, and this individual was billed inappropriately over, um, over the time, seven thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. The money was put on her taxes, it was levying on her taxes. So as a result, um, she was notified by the county that she owed this money, and when she looked into it and worked with Tamara, um, she was owed this money. So, um, I am going to make a motion, and we talked to our attorney, and all the board members were notified. I'm gonna make a motion to. I don't have her information, I just have the bill. Pardon? It's okay.
There you go, Steve.
Here I go. So I'm gonna make a motion to pay Makita Band, twelve seventy-five Swan Road, which is officially mailing Youngstown, New York, um, the amount of seven thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars and seventy-five cents for overcharge for water and sewer under two thousand twenty-two taxes.
A second.
With motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, thank you Tamara for, for figuring that out and working with her, and she was very nice about it, I don't know if I'd have been that nice. Um, finance, Jackie Nellin.
Yes, previously I submitted four budget revisions in your board packets for your review, and I ask for approval of those four.
I went over them today with Jackie, and I'll make a motion that we approve them.
Second.
With motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
I do have one more thing, late, uh, today I received the contract that comes from the town of Cambria for the Sambor nights. They've quite paid the town of Lewiston four thousand dollars a year to cover services at our senior center for their seniors. And, um, I mean, our attorney kind of proved it, it's we. It's the same contract year after year.
Yeah, so basically, we need approval of the contract and for the assignment.
How much did we approve the con- contract with the Sambor nights?
The town, the town of Cambria.
Town of Cambria.
Town of Cambria.
For, for our, our Sambor seniors.
They pay us again four thousand dollars.
Correct.
With motion of second?
Discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, he needs to add, is he gonna add that you, or do you want to separate, separate hold, go ahead?
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried, and we need a motion for me to sign the contract.
Motion to have, uh, supervisor sign the contract with the Cambria, uh, Sambor night.
With motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie, is that it?
That is.
Okay. Oh, I believe, is it for me? Councilman Jacoby?
Supervisor myself, Tim Coppins, and Nick Conde met with the two town, town attorney, they're back, and, uh, village attorney Joe Leone. And we discussed the, the contract that we have with, with the village, of how the police, uh, are funded, and how much the village pays, and how much we pay. And it's been a significant amount of time that the contract wasn't being followed. And, uh, it was really a pleasure to be involved, there's the two attorneys there, because you go line by line and look at the stuff, and as it came up, sometimes jail, sometimes Joe Leone, they'd say, well, we can work this like this, and they'd write it right down, and that, that section was done. So, uh, we arrived at an agreement, and I think it's a good agreement for the town, very good. And we didn't break the back of the village, cause they really don't have a lot of extra money to spend. And I went to the village meeting this past Monday, and they had a lot of discussion, but it was all, all cordial. And when they voted, they voted to pass it unanimously, and so we presented it, I make motion that we also sign the agreement, and, uh, that's a mo.
Second. With a motion of second, all in favor?
Do we have discussion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, I just want to know how it has changed, um, as far as with the contributions from the village? I noticed that it's increasing, I'm assuming that that's like a, um, oh, like an inflation in this area? But how has the contract changed?
So. So, you know, so through the course of several years, there's been resolutions passed, so nineteen eighty-five
Yes.
is the original contract.
And also you went through to clean up, but how does that?
But, but, there's been two attempts before us, before this board, to, to come up with a new contract. They actually had a complete contract, it's never signed, it's never applied, so they were working on the old contract. Through some board resolutions by either the village or the town, again, way before us, some of those areas of the contract wasn't being followed. The contract was still valid, cause it didn't have, it, it was a, basically a five year contract that didn't have an ending. So, it was meant to be negotiated in five years, it wasn't. So, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but basically I think since two thousand and twelve, somewhere in there, the village contribution to the town has been two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, and that has not changed.
Yeah, okay, so it's increased by twenty.
So.
Twenty thousand.
So right away, so the, the village board three years ago passed a resolution to increase it twenty thousand dollars to three oh four, with a new contract. So for three years, we haven't had a contract, we did not get that twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
They experienced some legal fees on a lawsuit, that there was some argument back and forth on who was supposed to pay those legal fees. Um, we, we resolved it. They kept their sixty thousand dollars from the last three years, they added the original twenty thousand dollars to the twenty twenty-five talent fiscal year. It'll actually be their twenty twenty-sixth fiscal year, cause it starts different times, they start, I think, June first.
Okay.
So basically, it is a two percent, is that right, now, a two percent increase over six years.
That's.
Okay, so.
It's two percent year over year.
For the first six, and then it freezes for the last four, so it's a ten year contract.
Finance is gonna ask you, so it's a ten year contract, um, and then it can be revised at that time?
Yes.
And then I do know, at the time, there was discussion about a additional police car?
No, that's.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right.
Let's go.
Just so you're aware, we monetized that, we tried to monetize that for the village, to say if that's what they wanted, this is what it would cost.
Okay, okay, good, cause that's.
They declined that à la carte.
Okay, so I knew that that was in conversation, like at the initial meeting, and so I just want to.
It was, it was on their wish list.
Oh, all right.
What they have to appreciate, and the captain will speak on this, we added a two PM to two AM police car. Is that every day?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Some additional village.
So, that means from two PM to two AM, there's three cars in the, on the town. It's not a hundred percent the village, it's not a hundred percent the town. So, their, their patrols will increase based on that and that alone.
Okay.
So, and, and again, anything we do falls on the town. So, this started when the mayor was first elected, I went to her and said, I have good faith, we really need to do something. It's not fair, the town taxpayers would be carrying the village for twelve, well, it wasn't twelve years then.
Yes.
We looked into it, the stickler was, okay, twenty thousand dollars, but you gotta have a new contract. And that wasn't always easy to do, so, we simplified it, there was some give and take, and we turned up the contract.
How much, how many of the twenty thousands did we get, Steve?
How many of the what?
The twenty thousand other payments, how many did we receive?
No, we didn't receive any.
That's what, I think I was up to say.
Yeah. So, because we didn't have a contract, so we got this, we, we worked it out, I feel comfortable with it.
Okay.
Um, so, we have a motion in a second to approve the contract, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And I need a motion for me to sign the contract.
A motion to have the supervisor sign the contract, so they can put the police.
With a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
So Tamara, if you could have one of, one of the originals put aside for me, so I can.
Excellent.
Okay, awesome. Uh, Councilman Morial?
Uh, tonight I had a sewer forgiveness for a Marbod EV, seven hundred Pauline, she had a pool installed, and the sewer fee was thirty-four dollars and seventy, seventy cents, I made a motion to get the forgiveness, it was a, it was checked over by Jeff, and he located it.
That's a motion?
Yes.
With motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Councilman Myers?
Couple events up in Sambor, uh, the historical society, they have their regular meeting, uh, tomorrow, November twenty-sixth, at seven PM, entitled Women of the Civil War by Don Dwyer, and it's kind of public's always welcome, refreshments are served, there's no charge, so donations are always appreciated. And coming up, uh, in December, they have their big Christmas at the farm, uh, so it's December fourteenth and fifteenth, uh, from eleven AM until three PM, both of those days, come in Santa, sit in an eighteen hundred sleigh, bring the camera and take pictures, crafts for kids, Santa shop with gifts to buy, and basket auction, lunch available to purchase. Uh, that's for the kids from twelve, I'm sorry, from two to twelve years old. And, uh, yeah, it's always a great event, so encourage people to come up to that, and in the Christmas spirit, appreciate you mentioning the crew getting the lights up. Always helps with, uh, the darkness coming and so on. Holly, Holly Joll is good.
Okay, awesome. Councilwoman Wexler?
Yeah, I forgot to say that, I'm sorry that he could not be here, but he had, um, an event to get to. Um, but there are a couple of hires, uh, that I would like to make a motion for approval. It is, um, Tim Rofus, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, on all members of the town board. Please approve the following seasonal hires in the rec, department for winter recreation season. They will be starting their hours on December second, twenty twenty-four, it would be Charles Dietman, recreational aid at fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents per hour, and Dylan Weber, also recreational aid at the same amount, fifteen, seventy-five per hour.
Now a motion?
Yeah.
No second. With a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Um, with that, upcoming board and commission meetings, the town board work session is December ninth at six PM. Historical preservation, December twelfth at five forty-five PM. Zoning board is December twelfth at six PM. Plating board is December nineteenth at six thirty PM. Also, the town hall will be closed this Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving holiday, and it will also be closing at two PM on Wednesday. So two PM, Wednesday, town hall will be closing, um, let me think, was there something else? I think that was it for questions. The planning board is on board, I want, yeah, I think that's it, go ahead.
My historical preservation and zoning board both meeting on twelve, uh, fifteen minutes apart.
I don't know, we have to ask the parties that.
Cause I'm the reason of the vote, man.
Okay.
I, I want to go to work.
Yeah, well, the main thing is you're here to open the door. So, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried, have a great Thanksgiving, everybody, and safe Thanksgiving.
Siren, sounds like the sirens.
Glad it's in the village, John.